Let's go ahead and I will call tonight's meeting to order. I don't ever bang the gavel, so I'll bang that gavel. Let's go ahead and start with roll call.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen, Finley, Martin, Peck, Rodriguez, Waters. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Great, let's go ahead and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick reminder that this meeting can also be viewed on the live stream at www.longmontcolorado.gov. Let's go ahead and also remind everybody that there's three people on public invited to be heard. You'll each have three minutes. If your name is not on here by the time we hit public invited to be heard, you're not going to have an opportunity tonight because it's a study session. Do we have any motions or any business to discuss directing the city manager or anything on future agendas? Awesome, seeing none. I'm going to hand this, I'm going to start. One last chance, okay. Let's go ahead and start. Public invited to be heard, when you come up, please give your name and address and keep it to three minutes, please. Brian Goverson.
All right, there we go. Good evening. My name is Brian Goverson, 310 Judson Street, Longmont. Hello, Mayor and council members. I came to actually speak to you tonight. I'm a trainer over at the rec center and I see a lot that goes on there and on the counter they had the plan of the new ice arena and the pool and I glanced at it and I just briefly looked at what I was aware of. There was no plans for exercise facilities in that plan. I don't know how the bill was worded or whatever, but I'm here tonight to ask you to consider that as an option and, you know, some of the things that I've been aware of is that this rec center has been overused and there's a lot of people going through there every day. I've been there for over three years now and if we can compare ourselves to Boulder, right now our population is around estimated at 94,000. Our one rec center serves that. We do have the memorial building, but the weight room in there, when there's maybe 10 people to 12, that is max. You know, it is maxed out and it is full. And Boulder has a population of around, you know, 107,000. They have three rec centers to accommodate their population and if you average that out, it's about 36,000 per rec center. So, you know, with that, I just, what I ask is that you pull your collective creativity together and if the plans are not, you know, locked in stone, that you consider expanding that because if you look at ice arenas and lane pools, they're either seasonal or there's not a lot of use to those, you know, other than when there's swimming events or there's training for the ice arena, you know, it's for hockey players, maybe skaters, but there's a smaller demographic. Whereas at the rec center, we're serving everybody there that wants to take classes, wants to do cardio, wants to lift weights, you know, take yoga, whatever it is. So, I don't know if you guys have any plans in the future to create a rec center or if that's on the agenda anywhere, but if it is, then maybe this is a moot point, but I'm just asking you to consider adding those facilities, weight rooms, cardio, classes at this new pool and ice arena. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowman, Jeff Bowman.
Jeff Bowman, 6675, Secretary at Longmont. All of you received a copy of the development report that we've been working on for several months. Started out about 14 months ago as an effort at the airport related to improve the relationship between the aviation community out there and the city of Longmont. And that evolved into a number of discussions with business people and developers. Ultimately sucked in quite a large group, including members of city council. And Tim and Marsha, thank you so much for your participation and guidance. Harold's staff, a number of folks there, the economic development group here headed by Jessica. We reached out to pilots, we reached out to Quiet Skies. So the report that you've got in front of you is a culmination of that and I'm not going to take you through it, you can read it yourself. I will tell you that there's a lot of people here that are interested in the airport. If there's any way that we can help, let us know. If you have any questions about the report, please let us know. We're happy to sit with you and explain the reasoning behind all of the comments there. We did a lot of fact checking, make sure that it was as impartial as we could make it. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for this document.
Greetings, Mayor Bagley, City Council, Strider Benston, 951 West 17th. I went down today and got me a copy of the Federalist Papers and I need to make an apology. I got a degree in political science at University of Colorado before I had ever read this and I think that shouldn't be allowed, but the quality of humanistic political historical education has gone down so much in the last 40, 50 years that, yeah, people can go through and, you know, I don't know what they do, but anyway, I'm getting through it again because our entire form of government and the institutional society we live in is under severe threat right now. There's a person who is under indictment by two different federal courts who a day or two ago put out a symbolic threat to assassinate the federal judge. Guy's name who did that is Roger Stone. People need to pay attention as to what's going on. What did we have two weeks ago? Oh, they shut down the government over something. Now it's a state of emergency to steal from the Congress the right to appropriate funds to do things. And the person who declared that state of emergency immediately went off to play golf for three days. Vice President's over in Europe making a greeting or declaration from the person calling himself president and he waited for applause. Not one single clap for the entire thing. And there were 50 United States congresspersons from both parties who were there. Our country is being destroyed from within. People better wake up and stop it before it completes because we have a future to build and let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. All right, that's it for public invited to be heard. I mean, at least for now. We would like to close public invited to be heard. We always invite the public to speak up, so don't quote me on that. That was a terrible quote, Mr. Friar. All right, yeah. All right, let's go ahead and move on to study session items. Tonight is the first instance where we are, we're going to see an ordinance at a study session and the idea is to make sure we get the discussion out prior to the consent agenda so we don't make changes on first and certainly not at second reading, which causes our legal staff to have heart attacks, aneurysms, embolisms, et cetera, and it probably will make it so the council has a more congenial relationship. So let's move on to 5A, impact fee deferral for new residential construction. We have a presentation.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, Joni Marsh with Planning and Development Services. So I'm here this evening to speak to you regarding the prospect of the city implementing a fee deferral program, which would basically defer impact fees for new residential construction until time of certificate of occupancy. I'm going to walk you through really the mechanics of what would need to happen in order to do that and we will have time for questions at the end. Currently, the ordinance as written does not allow for fees to be paid at time of certificate of occupancy. There is a draft ordinance attached in your packet this evening that lays out how we would shift that so that new residential construction could in fact pay those impact fees at a later date. And as I did an average of what fees typically are collected, in somewhere between 60 and 70% of fees are really impact fees that would then be deferred until time of certificate of occupancy, as opposed to the ones that we are proposing to keep paid with the issuance of a permit and those fees really are payment for service. Here's a list of all the fees that are considered impact fees and so there's a lengthy list. There is one fee that is not on here, which is the escrow fee for Polycarts, which is how you get your trash can and recycling bins delivered to your house when you move in. So that is another fee that's not on this list, but that we have moved in the draft ordinance. That fee is only about $119, so it is not significant. One of the things that we took a look at was there's obviously going to be a lag time from the time that you submit for a permit, get issued a permit and probably six to nine months before you actually get a certificate of occupancy. So in that time, the city won't be collecting revenue. So all of the staff who work in our utilities and enterprise funds went and took a look at what our projected estimates for residential building permits are for 2019. Those, the projections, 985 permits for residential is what we're projecting, 650 of those are multifamily, the remainder are single family. Using those numbers, staff went ahead and gave a projection of the amount of revenue that would then be collected six to nine months later than it normally would be, which is which is on this chart and also in your packet. These fees would be the ones that we would continue to collect at time of building permit And some of the mechanics of what we need to do from a business process standpoint, our business process is really built around collecting those fees at time of permit. So our land management and permit system will need to be reprogrammed and basically some scripting and some workflow updates. In conjunction with that, we'll obviously need to do some staff training to implement those changes as this is really a business process change of how we've done things in building inspections since 2001. So just some changes to make sure we don't have a lot of human error when we implement a new program. We'd also be looking to make sure that we give our contractors and applicants the opportunity to pick whether they want to do this at time of CO or if they'd like to continue to pay the fees upfront and we can set the system up so people could have that choice. And we'd also make sure that we educate around how some of the timing of COs. COs frankly tend to be a very last minute endeavor most of the time. So someone will come in on a Thursday at four looking for a CO the next morning at 10. We ask for a 48-hour turnaround when people apply for COs. We tend to be generous and do our best to get those out. As we look at some of the inclusionary housing ordinance implementation pieces, we're probably going to push that CO out further and further because we're going to have to be looking at cash in lieu, square footage, and also looking at contracts for the mid-tier housing to make sure those houses are sold within those levels so we're not collecting the fees. So keep in mind, we're going to have some shifting in COs and we'll do our best to make sure that all of our applicants and builders are kind of in the loop on what we're going to need upfront to get that done in a timely manner and not on an emergency basis. So a few questions for council. Basically, is council interested in proceeding with an impact fee deferral program either as outlined in the communication and the ordinance or with any changes? Is council interested in a sunset provision? Sometimes these ordinances have a sunset provision that say they go for five years and then they'd be reviewed. And also, we could also take a look at this on an annual basis, perhaps in conjunction with the inclusionary housing ordinance to see if it is in fact helping council meet their goals around affordability. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions and we have other staff as well.
All right, let's go ahead, so let's start with questions. If we have questions, all right, only questions at this point. Councilmember Martin?
This will be a quick one. It's a question from a constituent. The packet said that because of the affected funds have adequate balances, that this is not going to pose a cash flow problem for the city, but obviously deferred revenue is going to have some impact on interest income. Have we calculated how much that's likely to be?
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Finley, so I'm looking at Barb McGrane. Barb did most of the estimates for most of this and she's saying, no, we did not take a look at that interest piece.
Councilmember Peck, do you have a question?
I do, Mayor Bagley, thank you. The permit system for the software and process changes, do you know when that will be completed?
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Peck, so we've already laid out the course of what we need to do to change that. We haven't started the reprogramming. We know that'll probably take about 40 hours. Typically, what we do is then we put that into our development side, we do some testing, make sure it works, train our staff that way before we put it into production. And so that's why we kind of had the date if we could do that towards the end of March, that gives us ample time for implementation in the system and then the testing as well.
So that'll be ready once we start?
Correct, and because we brought this ordinance forward as a draft tonight on a study session, initially we had thought we'd come next week as a first reading and then on the fifth as second reading. We don't, I don't think that's going to happen, so likely by the time the ordinance goes into effect after second reading, should it come on the 19th for second reading? We should have ample time to make that happen.
Okay, I do have one other question. You were saying that from the time of permit to certificate of occupancy is about nine months, you're saying, give or take. What happens, and this might be my ignorance, but what happens if we get a building permit fee and then for whatever reasons for the developer, be it financing for the development or whatever, that that extension of when they are actually going to get that development going and getting the COs goes out to one year, two years, three? Do we have a, do we have a plan for that? That's a very long time to not be getting these fees that we need in these different departments. Go ahead.
So Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Peck, that is actually a great question. I know in the previous ordinance that they had in place in the 80s and 90s actually said that the impact fees couldn't go longer than six months from issuance of permits, so that would be one fail safeway. Instead of requiring payment at CO, you could actually say from the time you issued the permit, we would then have to keep track of that six months and then collect the revenue irrespective of whether they were at CO or not. But, you know, that doesn't happen a lot right now, but there could, where the CO extends beyond that six to nine month period, typically we're closer probably to the six to seven months, but certainly that could extend depending on what happens going forward.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Should we, let's say, decide to adopt the deferral of the impact fees? It was stated that there'd be kind of an implementation process to change the administration of how these fees work. In the concept of a sunset, would there still be a similar headache to claw them back to where they are now? So you'd again have to change the administrative process again? I mean, would that be likely to happen?
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Rodriguez, actually the good thing is by going and changing the scripting and changing it to allowing people to pay whenever, we wouldn't necessarily have the system implementation time that we're looking at right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's nobody else in the queue for questions, so what I would propose is let's do the 120 second, let's give staff our thoughts on this ordinance and let's just do one round and then see where we are. Mayor Protem?
I don't have to do anything. Cut me off. No, no, go ahead. Okay, first of all, this is listed as having, being Goal B1, but it actually has nothing to do with Goal B1. This is not citizen initiated, it was initiated by developers, builders, economic developers, which include the builders and developers in the real estate industry, the Chamber of Commerce and likewise includes all those, and the Longmont area real estate. The idea was for flexibility and I'm all for that and I would like to, I think this would be good if we allowed people to either pay everything at one time or pay it, pay the fees that we are not excluding, which be the permit and plan review, the inspection of construction and the city and county and sales tax and of course the schools tax. But I don't want it to go past six months and here's why. We have two notorious examples of, well, notorious is not the right word, two well-known examples of developments that were, that are large and complex, such as the Village at the Peaks, which went much further than, much, took much longer to get going, and also the old turkey plant, which has been going for, I don't know, five years and I'm a champion of that and I still am, but if we had waited for the fees for that, we'd still be waiting because it won't be ready to have a certificate of occupancy for a long time. When we look at this list of deferred fees until, that would be deferred until 2020, the total of that is $5,900,000 plus interest that we will be losing. That is a lot, you know? I hadn't thought about that when I agreed to consider this. That's why I don't want it to go longer than six months. So otherwise, I really don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to do that because it can, the delay development doesn't incentivize people to actually get to get going on their development. It kind of incentivizes them to delay it. I think it's hard for us to plan as a city on our budget if we don't know when people are going to pay. I think we are losing interest on that five, almost $6 million. It requires legal staff time to, and also planning staff time to draft readings and to redo our process, as Joni said. There's also a risk, if we delay this more than six months, there's a real risk to the city in revenue and project failure. Last week, Mayor Bagley said that he has developers coming in all the time who declare bankruptcy. That, you know, it's tough being a developer because it's a huge project, you have to line up financing, sometimes the financing falls through after you've already started, but we don't want to be on the hook and we don't want the taxpayer to be on the hook for things like this. Anyway, I, we tried this before, from 1987 to 2001, then we stopped that, we went from 1992 to 2001, then we stopped that. We try, we examined it from 2010 to 2011, it came forth three times and the city council denied it. So I just think if we try this, I'm okay with it because it gives developers flexibility, but I want it to be everything paid within six months after the permit has been paid.
All right, Councilman Rodriguez, why don't you go?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I believe one of the important things to concentrate on when we're talking about this is the different lending mechanisms that developers or constructors have to go through. When you go through the first part of the process, you're generally having equity lending, which is to the most part, a much higher interest rate than once you're able to transition that to a bank-backed loan. And so as you can imagine, by placing a lot of these fees at the beginning part, we're kind of placing an undue loan burden that requires much more interest than if they can defer that to when they have a bank-backed interest rate, which is much lower for them. So therefore, by doing this, we're allowing them to not produce so many soft costs at the beginning of the process that they then have to pass on. So ideally, you know, we're being able to, I guess you would say, not make them pass on so many costs by allowing them to divert a fee that we were going to, we're either going to collect at the beginning or collect it at the back end, but we're collecting it regardless. And while I agree with Councilmember Christensen or Mayor Protem Christensen that we should enact some sort of time limit, I think six months is a little too short for my taste, but I do believe that this does help accomplish a lot of things as far as especially those developers who are going to be delivering us the kind of product that we've seen, we've been saying that we wanted, be it capital A affordable housing or small A affordable housing for our workers that make just under the threshold to buy a normal median valued home in our community. So in that concept, I believe easily kind of manipulating how the lending mechanisms work in the concept of not passing on too many things to the equity portion of lending, that we're doing a net positive for our community going forward. And so I'm in favor of deferrals and I wouldn't be opposed to a timeframe connected to it, but as I said, I think six months would be a little bit too short for my taste.
Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Yeah, just, I'm going to just build on the theme that Councilmember Rodriguez just shared. I think anything that drives costs up, given the hard work we've done on an inclusionary housing ordinance and a package, anything that drives costs up, I think, works against our interest and what we're trying to accomplish, the objectives we're trying to accomplish for affordable housing. And what this is intended to do is create a way to keep costs down. So I'm going to, so I think it's a good idea, number one. Number two, the, to make a decision tonight in terms of six months or nine months as a deadline for paying, making full payment of the fees, seems to me to be a decision we don't need to make or a direction we have to give and a decision to make next week. I would, I would, I would not favor setting a deadline, a certain date by which all fees would have to be paid. What I would favor however, is establishing a review cycle and I would like to tie it, I think it makes sense to tie it. We've said we're going to monitor the effects, the implementation effects of our inclusionary housing ordinance. Seems to me that this ought to be part of that review. So if it's, if we're going to review a year out, the worst case would be that we're three months beyond a nine-month deadline if we were to set it, but I'd rather not set a deadline. I'd rather put this on this very same schedule and this be part of the review. So if somehow the city is creating a burden for itself, we would know that and be able to make a correction. Assuming that's not the case, I would think we ought to push ourselves to make certain that we're moving this along to the degree we can for the community that's building the homes we want to see people purchasing and moving into. And it seems to me that the incentive, we created those incentives and it's a good idea for developers to get that done in a timely way and get their certificates of occupancy and making the payments of 60% of those fees at the time of CO. So I like, I like the way this is laid out. Joni, thank you for the presentation, it's clear. So it's a yes to the, to the idea of deferred or differentiating or deferring some of those payments. And it's not establishing a deadline for full payment until CO and then reviewing these, review this part, review this change in the ordinance, of this ordinance along with the inclusionary housing ordinance and make adjustments if we need to as we go along.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, in terms of outcome, I agree with Dr. Waters. The review should be rolled into our inclusionary housing review. We don't need to have two different administrative procedures. I could not possibly top Councilmember Rodriguez's explanation of the financing. I would just like to add that to me, this is about taking risk out of developing residential properties in Longmont. Longmont is kind of high risk because our land is expensive and we have just added some risk with our affordable housing mandate that could potentially narrow the margins. And so what we do here by allowing them to pay those fees with cheaper money is kind of compensated for that extra risk. So I think it's a good idea, we should do it. I don't see much point in setting a fixed maximum time for fees because we're trying to improve the time from initial permit to certificate of occupancy anyway. anyway. So let's not put an artificial number on that that we probably are just going to have to come back and change.
Ms. Beth Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would agree. I would like to see us proceed with the deferral of the impact fees as outlined and I thought it was outlined very well. I would not want to see a, a deadline just because the delays can, delays can be caused for a lot of reasons and, and they're not all the fault of the developer. Sometimes the city has a reason that they can't process some of this stuff as quickly as six months, for example. So I would not want to have a, a deadline, an artificial deadline that we probably would have to change as Councilmember Marsha said. Also taxpayers are not on the hook for the money, the impact fees. The impacts don't happen until there's actual occupancy. So you're not, you're not really, you're not impacted until those people move here. So we're not on the hook for that. It's just money that we realize once those people move here. So annual review, I think it should just be reviewed when we review the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And I don't think I want to see a sunset provision. If we would like to sunset it, we could certainly do that at any time.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I agree with everything that's been said with one exception or explanation of what I'm going to say is that the, what is going to be impacted are the different departments that are going to not receive these fees for their work, which is the water, sewer, storm. Those, that work has to be done and would be paid back to those departments through those fees. So my concern is because we're, we're fiscally responsible to the city as well, not just to the developer, that, my concern is if we don't have some groups for people, for developing, development to at least make a report to Planning and Zoning why they cannot make these fees at that time. And then not micromanage Planning and Zoning, but let them decide whether they wanted to extend it or not, is that when we come up with, when we come back to it with our budget and different departments ask us for money for certain things that they need to do within their departments, we have to pay them for the work they're doing so that they can continue with whatever it is they are asking money for, whether it's CIPs or just regular work within the city. So that, that is my concern about not having some kind of a deadline as to when, as to when they at least have to report as to why they can or cannot make this fee within the nine or 10 month window. And the other thing again is, like I said, regardless of what the reason is, whether it be financing problems or recession or whatever it is, that this does not get built out in the timeframe. And we're looking at two, three years when we actually have occupancy. That's a lot of, that's, that is a lot of infrastructure that we have done within the city, not knowing when we're going to get those impact fees back. So I agree with all this. The fees should be deferred, but I do think that we should have, stick to the nine-month to be looked at by Planning and Zoning alone and say, can we do this or not and why can't you make it? And let them decide whether it's a good or, or a bad thing. So I agree with all of this. I like the year, the review at the time that we're going to review the IZ. And, but I would also like us not to start this until we have the software process, the permit system finished and all the training done, even though you say that'll take about 40 hours. If in fact it takes longer for whatever reason, I think we should make sure that we can process it correctly, cleanly and work through it easily.
My thoughts are, I think we should proceed with the deferral of the impact fees as outlined only because they are impact fees. They're not, you know, we want to use your money or we want your money, give it to us because the city needs it fees. It's, if you're having an impact on the city, you should pay for that impact. Build or pay as you go, so does, I mean, or pay your own way or, or pay for, for new development. Should be paid for by new development. The, so yeah, I would, I mean, so if it, if it takes two or three years for a developer to actually get the project done or even 10 years, there's technically no impact going on because the building doesn't have occupants or occupants, not occumens. I don't know where that word came from. So, so what I've heard is, I've actually heard five councilpeople, all of us have said can proceed with the deferral of the impact fees. Five have said proceed. Sorry, it's my daughter. I'm not going to pick up although I want to. They're going to proceed. So all of us have said proceed with the deferral of the impact fees. Five of us have said proceed as outlined. One has said a six-month deadline and another has said nine months. And so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I move that we direct staff to proceed with the deferral of the impact fees as outlined. All right, Mayor Protem, you're in the queue.
I'd like to point out that the city doesn't start building, building out sewer systems and water systems after people are living there. We have to do it ahead of time. So there is an impact before people are there. We have to prepare for that. So we do need, we can't just wait for five years while somebody is doing whatever. We have no idea what, what the variables are, what the economics of their particular business is, but that's really not our job. Our job is to protect the citizens of the city and to try to get some affordable housing. So I think without any kind of timeline on this, we're being very naive.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's go ahead and vote.
All right, that passes unanimously, that passes six-four, I mean, six-four the motion and with Mayor Protem Christiansen against. All right, let's move on to, does the council want to see a sunset provision included in the ordinance? Dare I hope that we just give a yes or no answer. Let's start with that and then we can have a discussion in the event that we don't all agree. Let's start with Bonnie Finley. Councilmember Finley, yes or no?
No.
Councilmember Peck? Does council want to see a sunset provision included in the ordinance? Okay, Councilmember Peck said no. Dr. Waters?
No.
Dr. Waters said no. Councilmember Rodriguez?
No.
All right. And then Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor Protem says yes. Councilmember Martin?
No.
All right. We've got six noes. Let's go ahead and make a formal vote, okay? I move that we do not see a sunset provision included in ordinance. All right, let's vote. All right, that passes with six council members voting for and Mayor Protem Christiansen voting against. Last but not least, does council want to have an annual review of the program? Let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Waters?
Yes, and have it tied into the, so we're not doing separate reviews with the inclusionary housing ordinance. I'd like to see them together.
Councilmember Peck? Councilmember Finley? Councilmember, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, what Councilmember Waters said and didn't we already give that direction in the first vote that we took?
No one was, no sun, uh, is, is, I don't think the ordinance includes an annual review, does it? Right? So, yeah, no.
Well, so we already said it, but anyway, we can vote on it.
That's all right. And then Mayor Protem Christiansen? Okay. And then I'm a yes too, but let's do it at the same time as inclusionary zoning. So I move that we have an annual review of the program and do it in alignment with the inclusionary zoning review every year. All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. God, I don't know what's, I'm tongue-tied tonight unanimously. I am just, I just can't speak. Right? Too much time. Somebody give me a Diet Coke. All right, let's go on to continuation on the discussion of modification development incentives for affordable housing. We have a presentation. Ms. Fosdick, welcome.
I'm Erin Fosdick with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight we're following up on the discussion that we started on January 29th regarding development incentives for affordable housing. In your packet, we've provided a draft red line of an ordinance that would amend the land development code related to these incentives. We've incorporated the direction that we have received to date, most recently at the January meeting and some in 2018 as you were talking about the inclusionary housing ordinance. So this is what we plan to focus on tonight. I have a short presentation. There's also other staff here that can answer questions. I do want to note that Kathy's provided a summary of the inclusionary housing ordinance for you and if you have specific questions on that, she's here to answer those. But we thought that might be helpful if there's questions that are related to that piece of this discussion. As I mentioned, you most recently provided direction several weeks ago. There was also a direction provided at some of your November conversations on that IHO and we've really tried to incorporate that into the, the work you see here. We'll quickly review the incentives that we have on the books. Last meeting, you did not direct us to make changes to those specifically. And really what we want to focus on tonight is two items that we need clarification on moving forward and those really relate to determining eligibility for these incentives. And then we'll briefly close by talking about next steps. As we mentioned last time, the current development incentives that are in the land development code are here on the screen. Just as a reminder, there's a separate set of financial incentives that are elsewhere in the municipal code. That is not what we're talking about tonight. These are the incentives that are in the land development code. So as you'll recall, we have options for density and height bonuses, lot size and lot width reductions, parking reductions for the units in a development that are affordable and finally expedited review. And currently these are available to an entire project with the exception of the parking reduction. At the meeting in January, we showed this table and talked about the general direction that council had provided regarding making the development incentives consistent with the inclusionary housing ordinance. And so we have done that. You'll, I've included here on the screen the number in the draft ordinance that refers to the change. So most of these are really to simplify the incentive section or remove things that are no longer pertinent. You'll see some proposed updates that are really referencing other sections of the code rather than spelling them out specifically. You'll also note the last bullet here is to remove the temporary provision that you added with the passage of the inclusionary housing ordinance. And that was really a result of the conversations you had where you were concerned about conflicts arising between the IHO and these incentives. And so you put that provision in on a temporary basis now that we're updating the incentives that can be eliminated. So getting to the items that we're seeking some clarification on, there are two. I'll go through each of them and then I have two questions that we can go through similar to what you did on the last item. The first item we're seeking some additional clarification on is really the threshold for being eligible for incentives. At the meeting in January, council directed that developments providing the minimum amount of affordable housing of 12% should be eligible for the incentives. And so we've reflected that change in the draft red line ordinance that you have in your packet. We did want to clarify if council's intention was that developments providing exceptionally affordable housing should also be eligible. So you'll recall in the IHO that there is a provision that allows for obligations to be reduced by 25% for developments providing greater levels of affordability, so exceptionally affordable, which is in the ordinance at 60% AMI for, for sale units and 40% for rental. So we're asking if these developments that are providing a smaller amount of housing but at greater levels of affordability should also be allowed to be eligible for the incentives. Council would still need to approve the agreement allowing for that lower amount of housing, but really what we're asking tonight is if we should include in the ordinance that those same developments should be eligible for the incentives. The other piece that we're interested in clarifying is the notion of onsite and off-site housing. We talked about this quite a bit at the meeting in January and so I apologize if we did not get your direction correct, but we thought it was worth bringing back. And so I have three examples. We've included these in the communication, but we thought we would just walk through them. And really what we're after is understanding what, which developments should be eligible for the development incentives. The first example we feel relatively confident in, and that is a development that provides their housing onsite. So you can see here, affordable housing units are provided within an overall development. They're constructed as part of that development. The entire development is eligible for the incentives. Where it becomes a little less clear is the next two examples and I'll go through each of these. You'll see here that in this example, affordable housing is satisfied offsite. So in this case, let's assume that council has approved an offsite location as a way to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirement. No affordable housing is being constructed at the sending site. That's here in gray. That housing is being constructed at the receiving site here in orange. And so in this example, only the receiving site would be eligible for the development incentives. It's important to note that from a, a planning perspective, both of these, there's two separate projects each going through the development review process. In this example, only the receiving site is eligible for the incentives. Contrast that with this example, example number three in your packet. Same scenario, a developer has gotten an alternative agreement approved with council to provide their housing offsite at a receiving site shown here in green. The sending site is not providing any affordable housing. So our question is, in this example, should both developments be allowed to receive the development incentives? So in this case, affordable housing is satisfied offsite. No affordable housing is constructed on the sending site. It's all constructed on the receiving site or at least on part of the receiving site. But in this example, both development applications would be eligible for incentives. So both developments could get density, height, lot width and size reductions, parking at least for the affordable units and expedited review. So the specific questions that we have for council are regarding the eligibility threshold and the on and off-site question. The first one is when council approves an agreement that facilitates the construction of these lower-priced affordable homes, exceptionally affordable homes, should these projects also be eligible for incentives? So if they're only providing 9% of their overall units, but they're at a much lower rate, much more affordable, should these be eligible for the incentives? And then the second question is where council approves offsite affordable housing, which development should be eligible for the incentives? Should it be limited to the location where the housing is being provided or should both the sending and receiving sites be eligible for the development incentives? My last slide is really next steps.
So let's go ahead, let's go ahead and this process seems to be working so far and Councilmember Peck, Peck has already chimed in. So let's start, actually, let's start with questions. Do we have any just questions? Okay, so let's go ahead. Okay, can we have, Mayor Protem go first just to ask her a question? Stay in the queue. It's okay, stay in the queue. Mayor Protem? You don't have a question?
I have a question with this, I'm confused, a little confused with example two and example three and I'm glad you included those because that's very helpful to include those both. So we're both talking about the same sort of proportion as the previous page where there are 50 units and then there'd be... and then there'd be six of them are affordable, okay. Yeah, you know, the thing is that originally we don't want to have little clusters of just low income housing. And that's the problem with offsite housing. So I don't see how either of these will exactly fix that, but I do think that on example three, this should not, they should not both be eligible for the one that doesn't have any, that is only market should not be eligible for the affordable incentives.
All right, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. My question for on and off sites, and I've talked to two people today, and I still don't have a clarification. I'm looking at you, Councilwoman Waters. According to this, it's so clear. The sending site is not building any affordable housing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are they still required to do fee and lieu?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, in the example that we're asking based on the direction that we received at the January 29th meeting, we are not including payment and lieu. So in this example, a developer has come to city council and said, I'd like to satisfy my inclusionary housing requirement by constructing the affordable housing as part of another project in a separate location, and so they're not doing fee and lieu. That's a separate, that would, that would be a separate conversation, and council directed us last time that that wasn't to be considered.
Okay. So if each site is doing 100 units, then 12 of those units, would there not be 24 units then that would be required? Because the 12 units from the original site are being deferred to the offsite? And we may have had this conversation before, but clarify that for me.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, so in the example you just described, it's different from the example on screen, but I'll do some quick, quick planner math here. If I am a developer and I'm building 100 units, and I say I am going to provide my 12 units at a separate location, a separate location that maybe I'm doing another project at that's 100 units, I may be providing 24 or whatever the equivalent is, 12% of each project is affordable. But they're not required, I mean, in this example, they're only providing the 12% at the receiving site. So they may say, I have 100 unit project, I'm just going to build a 12 unit apartment complex in a separate location, and that would satisfy their requirement. So there's not an additional requirement at the receiving site.
However, we would be losing 12 units without any fee and lieu if there was no mandate that they would have to, you know, if they're doing another development of another 100.
Then that would apply to that development, in which case...
So they would be getting out of any affordable housing on their original.
So let's, let's say that in this example three, let's say that those represent 100 units.
Okay.
And let's say that the green represented the proportional share, which is 12. Let's say that instead of the 12 units only in that green, it was part of a larger project that that developer was doing that was also 100 units. They would be providing 24 total units.
Exactly, that's what I was saying, okay, thank you.
Short answer, you will always get your 12%.
And again, this does not apply to fee and lieu. It's only when they're actually building units. Let's go ahead now with Dr. Waters. Wait, who do we got, we went with, yeah, so Dr. Waters.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Erin, could you go back to example two? Of your, your question, so I'm not certain I'm going to take them in the right order, but you asked the question, which of these two options, in my mind, it's option two would be the preference. That I don't think both sending, the sending site wouldn't, in my mind, would not, they've already, they've satisfied, they've satisfied the 12% by building offsite, that's as far as it goes. They, in my mind, wouldn't benefit from incentives on that site. Only the affordable units on the second site would be, in my view, would be eligible for the incentive, not all the units, only the affordable units. Now, in this example, I just want to clarify, because this is, I think, what Councilmember Peck was asking, in this example, I see 120 units. Assuming everything not in the dark outline is part of another project. Is that a fair way to view this?
Correct, so imagine this is a random area of the city, and more than, in most likelihood, these would not be this close. But yes, the gray and the red are the, only the lots that are part of these developments.
So when I, oh, so the other, what, 60 are not?
Right, so the gray lots in this example are those that are kind of the market rate project. The red is another, the offsite project that the developer is.
Is that, is the, is the same developer for all three of these? For the dark, when I say all three?
The one without shading.
The one without shading, I see 60, 10, 20.
Let's say that those are already built. Let's say that's an existing neighborhood.
All right, so that's, now we've gone on the other side of an existing neighborhood. So now I see 60 plus 10, that's 70 units that that builder's building as part of one project?
So let's say in this example that there's 60 total units, and they're providing.
60, yeah, yeah.
They're providing, what is that? Seven units then?
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
Actually, I think it was supposed to be 50 and 6 is what the math should have been.
So that, so the, we would just peel away, that would be like green space, those, in the red box. There's only six units there.
Yes, let's just say that those red ones are the only ones that are being built.
I'm just trying to get clear on the example, because it, what I didn't track for me when I looked at it, is like, wait a minute, what? If I'm going to do my, I don't do planner math, see, I'm no good at this. You do planner math, that makes it, makes it work.
I mean, you could envision that each of these is an apartment building, a condo building.
So I get, so the answer to my question is just think of that as a six unit project. I get it, now you've met your 12%.
Correct.
Perfect. In my view, the, I guess on the 9% question, I don't know if you're asking this right now on the 9% exceptional project question? It would be helpful, I guess in my head, we're talking about if it's 30 to 50% AMI for purchase homes, that's likely a habitat partnership with a developer. And it would be habitat building 9% of the total project as 30 to 50% AMI for sale. Would that, is that safe?
That could, yeah, I think the inclusionary housing ordinance has that 60 and 40 threshold for for sale and rental. And you're right, it's most likely.
So from my perspective, if a project included 9% of the units as exceptional, right, for sale, 30 to 50 or 30, 50 to 60% AMI, I think that would be something, I think that's probably one that would come to us. Or not? Because it's not meeting the 12%?
Yeah, I mean, if a developer came in and said, I want to build a 12 unit building, and they're all going to be, it's going to be 12 condos that are 50% AMI, that would, and they were satisfying their requirement onsite, that likely wouldn't come to council. And so would a development like that, should a development like that be eligible for these development incentives?
I think it should, with that kind of exceptional, if it's for sale or for purchase options in that AMI, I think that's really consistent with what we've said we want to accomplish personally. And when it comes to the expedited review, I don't know if that's the question you're asking now, is I've thought about the conversation last time and the materials you sent. It seems to me at this point, everybody is going to have something in the mix in terms of affordable housing. And it's only the exceptional, we ought to unburden ourselves, in my view, I said this last time, of the expedited review unless it's an exceptional project.
All right, let's go ahead now with Councilmember Finley.
Well, I think we should have incentives for projects providing 9% of their overall units is exceptionally affordable. I definitely think we should have incentives for those. The offsite, I can see that either in our example number two or number three, I I could make a case for either one of those. Since I'm against inclusionary housing altogether, I would go with whatever you guys think we should do on that one.
Thanks for taking a stand there. I don't know, wherever you guys want to go, what movie, I don't know, whatever you want to go see, thank you, that's all right. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think first I'll address the 9%. I believe we're calling it exceptional affordable, but I like using a term that a member of staff who's sitting here used as uber affordable. I do believe that incentives should apply as, I think it'd be harder to get stock at that level built into our city with the inclusionary housing, we're more likely to get the very top limit of 60 and 80 rental and ownership versus the 40 and 60 or 30 and 50, whatever the example happened to be, so I'm for incentives on, on the uber affordable. And then I do not believe that the sending site should receive, if it's all market, market rate, the sending site, I do believe should be eligible for the incentives, I was against offsite anyway, just to throw that out there, but as such, I believe only the offsite and not the sending site should receive incentives.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I agree across the board that the 9% should get the incentives if they're exceptionally affordable. I'm also split on number two or number three, I mean, one way to think about number three is that you just ignore the discontinuity of the two building sites and say this is one development for all intents and purposes, which it probably is in the mind of the developer, they're just using the land they've got. But I think just based on intuition, I'd like to go with the consensus and the emerging consensus and say, yeah, it should be number two, and only the receiving site should get the incentives.
Mayor Protem?
On the first question, I agree with, I think what we're all seeming to be saying. You know, study after study told us that the greatest need was for 30% and below for rental and for 60% to 80% for purchase. And yet what we have incentivized actually is higher than that, so I do think that these, I agree with Councilman Waters in his estimation of expedited review, which as he said last week, it doesn't really make sense anymore to have expedited review because then everyone would be expedited. Because now, this was an incentive to get people to build, but they did not, so now they must build, and so this will, the incentive, what we would like to incentivize is the very low cost buildings as well as everything, you know, the 80 to 120%, there's a need for that, of course, too. But this is the greatest need and the most critical to getting people who are really experiencing so much housing instability to helping them out. And I would agree to eliminate the expedited review except for these very low income for sale and for rent. I also had a question, Erin, about, we had, in the original incentives, we had fee waivers. And since we just talked about deferred fees, I'm wondering what those fee waivers are and if they still stand, I thought they had to do with water and sewer. What were those?
Mayor Bagley, Mayor Protem Christensen, there's a whole separate set of financial incentives that are included elsewhere in the municipal code that are not part of the land development code, and so those are separate, those still exist. Those are not part of tonight's conversation, we're not amending those or touching those at this point.
But won't that, well, not to go back to what we already talked about, but aren't those really tied up with the very things we just got through talking about, the development fees?
I'd have to ask, yeah, I'm seeing Joni shake her head no, those fees would still be looked at separately. So again, not part of this, it's all part of an incentive package, but those are separate from what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, I've got a comment, but I'm actually going to motion first, because I hear we have, I think we have unanimous consensus on this, which is, I move that projects providing 9% of their overall units is exceptionally affordable should be or shall be eligible for development incentives. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Surprised you, didn't I, Michelle? Oh yeah, Ms. Gomez, not keeping up. All right, that passes unanimously. And I guess, I guess my, I mean, I guess I'm feeling a little contrary in here. I guess my thoughts are, I think that the data has shown that the biggest bang for our buck is getting money from the developer and then giving it to Kathy Fedler, and then she goes and she uses that money to leverage it with the state and the feds, and then we get a lot more affordable housing. So I don't understand why we would give any incentive for developers to build offsite at all. Because we want them to do cash and lieu, not build affordable housing. We want them to give a check to Kathy and Karen and have them go out and build way more than they would actually build. That's, that's number one. Also, the other thing is, if we allow, so I do, I mean, if we allow for offsites, whether it be two or three, if we allow the receiving site to be eligible for incentives, we're already facing an uphill battle. When a developer comes in and says, hey, I want to do 12%, and I'm going to stick it in another area of town, but not in my project, we're already going to be facing citizens who are like, we don't want this here. But now, all of a sudden, we're going to be dealing with, you know, more height, more density, less, less room between, between properties. And it's going to be, I think it would be a bigger inconvenience to the receiving neighborhood. My, in my, in my, in my mind, the only thing we would want to incentivize would be true inclusionary zoning, which is, the idea was that you would want to place affordable homes in a mix throughout the community so that those who are in affordable homes are in a situation where they're part of the community. I can see wanting to give an incentive for the developer to build those homes, like, number one. But I couldn't imagine giving up the excess affordable housing that we get by getting a check. And I don't, as a, as mayor, as a city councilman, I wouldn't want to be dealing with the neighbors as they're coming to us saying, wait a second, so they're going to be, they're not building this on their location. They're going to build this behemoth of a, you know, monstrosity, you know, next to my house? Why did you let that happen? And so I personally don't think we should offer incentives on the receiving site at all. We should do everything we can to disincentivize building offsite. And so I guess I'm for number one. Woo, that brought people out. All right, let's go with Councilmember Peck.
So I thought that first round was just to ask questions, so I.
Yeah, you did great, Councilmember Peck.
So I actually agree with you on that. Because I, my fear for the offsite was that we would build nothing but affordable or low income houses on that site. And if another developer is developing their land or already has developed their land, and then they have this little plot of land that someone's going to put six, seven, eight houses on that are lower income, that is going to be a big problem. The other thing is that I want to take expedited review out of, out of the current development incentives. And the reason for that is that we heard from planning and zoning that they try to expedite everything, and so, okay, but I want to tell why.
I know, I know, go ahead.
So I'm being pushed to make a motion. So I move that we remove the expedited review out of the current development incentives.
Do we have any dialogue or debate on this before we vote? Okay, let's vote. Surprise, Michelle. Surprise, Michelle. All right. All right. That passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Peck. Floor is still yours. Unless you don't want it.
I do think we should give incentives to the, uh, lower income nine percent. So, um, we already did that. Just rein in. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. So as I, as I hear the concerns about offsite, I just, I need to just clarify. Any proposed, uh, approach or plan for meeting the affordable housing obligation, if it's offsite, requires our approval.
Correct.
So if it's a behemoth, it's in the wrong neighborhood, it creates low income housing neighborhoods, go on and on and on. The only way that happens is if this council or subsequent councils consciously in this room make that decision, right? It's not a staff decision. No matter what developers want to do, we get to decide, right?
We bring that to you all.
So from the, from the perspective of protecting neighborhoods, I don't think we give anything away by including the offsite. Now, let me ask another question or I'll just give another example, why I think we should keep offsite as an option. Some of you may be familiar with, uh, a piece of land. And I don't know how this is going to play out, but it's a great example of the offsite, um, situation. So I know that, um, I know there's a developer who's working with a developer to donate a piece of ground to Habitat as a way to earn credits, right, consistent with this, with our credit plan. It would be, uh, an off, it would be offsite. This developer's not building right now. They're going to earn credits, but it would be an offsite project. Every home, in, is my understanding, and I don't know how this is going to come together, but as a good example, would be thirty-two to thirty-five for sale homes constructed by Habitat. You know, in those price ranges for thirty-five to fifty percent AMI. If we don't allow the offsite provision, I don't know how that kind of project gets done. Now, we'd have to approve it and we wouldn't approve it if it wasn't, if it didn't meet design standards and all that kind of stuff. But to take, to take that away from us, it, it is, is based on the things that are happening, the responses that are happening right now to what we did with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And there's a lot of exciting, encouraging, at least conversations underway, and I know planning underway. Of all those, this one might be the most exciting, uh, as a partnership between Habitat and a developer, taking advantage of what we've done. This wouldn't be happening, I'm, I'm told, without, without what we did. But if we don't allow for the offsite, that project never materializes. And I just think we ought not to deny ourselves those options since we get to decide.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'd just like to put in a word for the diversity of options that we have. Because while it is probably true that if we got all fees in lieu, that we could eventually roll that up and leverage it into a lot of affordable units of exactly the nature that we needed at that time. There's a matter of agility and a matter of creativity. And the development, community and the builders have more, more of both of those things than we do. So, um, when they are building their own affordable units in what I've seen so far, very creative ways, we're going to get those units sooner. Whereas if we have to save up enough money in the, uh, housing fund from, from fees in lieu, it's probably going to be a couple of years before we have the leverage to start our own housing project. So if we get things going both ways, it's into, it's to our advantage. We get fees in lieu and we get tailored projects that are maybe going to be larger, maybe going to be more affordable. But, uh, in the meantime, we get some good units soon. So that's my two cents on it.
Mayor Protem? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Also to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Martin's comments, I don't think we want the city to become a full-time development company either way. And so as such, I, I am going to move that council says to go with example two or the receiving site only receives the development incentives.
Uh, nobody's in the queue. I'm actually going to vote for this because I was persuaded by the fact that we get to decide if it's offsite. But after this, I'm actually going to make another motion, and that is, I do think that so long as twelve percent of the sending site has affordable housing, I should think we should have that incentive as well. Not, not, meaning, uh, that's the fourth option. But what I'm saying is though, what I'm saying is, anyway, I'll, I'll bring that up in a second. Let's go ahead and vote. I'm out of order. Chair, you are out of order. Yeah, we're voting. That passes unanimously. Okay. All right. Now, so what I was saying is, um, I don't see anything wrong with doing two, not two and three. Meaning, I mean, see, not number three, where they send all of it to the receiving site and then the sending site has no affordable housing and therefore they get the, they get the incentives and then the send, the receiving site gets incentives. What I'm saying is, I, I, what's wrong with doing number one as well? Do we want to incentivize true inclusionary zoning? Do we want one and two? So, no, but we, we just, so is not, but we just took a vote on number two, right? So what I'm saying is, what about number one?
Mayor Bagley, at the meeting on the twenty-ninth, I think council provided direction that onsite provision of housing should be eligible for the incentives. So we feel comfortable that example one is covered.
Perfect. All right. I just wanted to make.
Yeah, one was just a grounding point as we moved off into the other options.
I didn't want to sound stupid, but I was like, guys, when did you guys all just decide to like, leave me behind here? I don't remember talking about this. Okay, good. As long as we're on the same page, I'm a happy camper. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I don't remember anything after about ten thirty. All right. So that is our direction.
Uh, Mayor Bagley, members of council, thanks for that direction. We plan to incorporate what we received tonight into that draft red line ordinance and prepare an ordinance, um, for first reading on March fifth. And then we would, um, if that's advanced on consent, obviously bring the second reading and public hearing on March nineteenth. And then the other piece that we talked about last time, just as a reminder, is you did direct staff to continue to work with our code consultant Clarion Associates on looking at additional, uh, best practices and potential for different types of incentives or incentives that might apply to people providing even more than the required minimum. And so that would come back at a later date, not tied with this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Now, can I clear this? I can't see who's in the queue. Councilmember Peck?
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I wanted to thank staff for giving this presentation to us before first ordinance. It really made, I mean, first reading, it really makes a big difference and allows us to discuss, uh, before we have to make a decision. So thank you very much.
Good job, Eugene. What? I hear chuckles. Now, for those of you watching at home, we have a very special treat. We are going to spend the next two and a half, maybe three, three and a half hours arguing about single-use plastic straws. So just buckle up, grab your popcorn, set the DVR or your DirecTV to record and observe the beauty, which is local politics unfold before your very eyes. Sandy Cedar.
Wow, what an introduction. Thanks, Mayor. Mayor Bagley, members of council.
It should take two seconds.
Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I'm bringing one bill to you and it looks a little odd because it's a bill that we're recommending for you to monitor, but Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Christensen asked for me to bring it up so I can explain why that recommendation is. This bill distributing plastic straws only upon request would basically prohibit restaurants from just handing you straws. You'd have to ask for a straw. It doesn't do anything to change like dispensers, straw dispensers at different restaurants or contain, you know, straws that come with little containers like juice boxes. None of those things are affected by this. Only prohibits people from handing you a straw without being asked. The reason I'm asking for a monitor position is because the Colorado Municipal League is going to be running a similar bill that would basically allow, clarify that city councils can basically ban anything that they would like, um, as part of home rule municipality. So that would be plastic bags. It could be straws. It could be recycling containers. It could be all sorts of things. And so because the Colorado Municipal League is going to be running that bill, our suggestion is not to support this bill only because then those would conflict and actually reduce home rule, um, support.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Finley wants to take away Diet Coke in this community and Councilmember Peck wants to take away small children. Oh, sorry. She, she, it's kale now. Okay, you're okay. You're all right. All right. So, uh, we've got, uh, do we have a motion? Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Sandy. I, I am very glad you explained it in a much more articulate way than I could. Basically, this is sort of a feel-good bill and it came forth from the restaurant industry because it's a way to, you know, hold at bay things. But we do, we're not going to ban anything we want. We just, plastic. But, uh, the CML bill, uh, would, um, let municipalities, um, ban a wide variety of plastics as a way to be more ecological, but of course, we'd have to think about that and make it something possible for businesses to actually, uh, work into. But, so the comprehensive thing would be a much better thing. And if we pass this, or if we supported this and it passed, that would cut down, that would eliminate the possibility of a broader and, um, more effective, uh, bill.
All right. Seeing nobody, can I have a motion? I've made lots of motions tonight. Somebody else needs, needs to do some work. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, uh, move that we, uh, approve the city manager's recommendation to monitor the bill.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Sorry for getting everybody's hopes up at home. I'm going to get out of here early tonight. Start, start scrolling through Netflix now. Oh, it's me. I got a vote. All right. Now it's unanimous. It passes unanimously. All right. So, uh, mayor and council comments. Can I, all right. Dr. Waters?
Uh, before Sandy, Sandy's already, already sat. I asked Sandy if, uh, if, just so you know, just for the sake of clarity or transparency, I asked Sandy to, if she would bring back at least for, to educate us, if nothing else, uh, House Bill ten fifty-two, which is?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Waters, House Bill ten fifty-two deals with special districts that are specifically laid out for early childhood education. At the time, this bill didn't register necessarily with staff because special districts were not appropriate in Longmont. But since that has changed, I'll be bringing back that bill to you to support your early care and education goals.
This is a bill that's already cleared committees, I understand it. And has a fair amount of support. Interesting, given our discussions of latent decision of last Tuesday and our early childhood education goal. Thank you.
So what would it allow? That neighborhoods could then create a metro district to pay for early childhood education?
It's my understanding that it would allow, whether it's a neighborhood or an entire city, you would determine the jurisdiction and I think probably not, I think rather than neighborhoods. If you think about what we heard not too long ago about the, the scope of our, of the challenge here, the magnitude of the challenge, and how do you get to the funding and whatnot, you know, obviously there's a whole bunch of bridges you'd have to cross, but it creates a, an opportunity, capacity for municipalities at some, in some configuration, to take their own initiative to increase the likelihood that every child is receiving what they need in terms of a high-quality early learning and preschool experience.
Cool. Thank you. Councilmember Finley?
This is just a point of personal privilege. It's my dad's ninety-fourth birthday today and I just want to wish him happy birthday.
Aww. Well, happy birthday, Mr. Finley. Mr. Nickel. Well, your dad, well, Mr. Nickel. That's true. All right. Um, Mayor Protem?
Well, I would like to point out that there was nothing against, um, having metro and municipal districts. Issue we were talking about was residential municipal, so. So then it wouldn't be for the city as a whole, it would just be neighborhoods?
I guess my question is, how are we doing on getting, making some progress on, when will you be ready to bring together that group that we met with at Bright Eyes and others? When should I start pushing? Karen's like, ah, we'll talk offline. Nope, Karen? No, no, we'll talk later. Ah, nice. She said she has three dates possible. That's awesome. Dr. Waters?
Just on that theme, we, um, we, we had talked at one point about this video and could we just get an update? Because I, I, the, the video that Councilmember Peck mentioned from National League of Cities, and I, and I don't know what the, what the constraints are in terms of access and use, but that seemed to me like be, it would be a great asset in, in an event, right, as a, as a way to get it started or as a way to fuel thinking. What do we, what do we know?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Waters, when we contacted NLC to see if we could purchase the film, the answer was, well, that doesn't work that way. They'd like to show it as part of a conversation. So we're trying to figure out how do we schedule that and kind of lay that out. So they won't just, we, we tried to purchase the film so that we could show it here in Longmont or be able to distribute it. And that's not their licensing plan at this point.
Let's set it up in a museum or the old theater on Main Street or.
That's the last I heard is that we're trying to figure out times and dates and coordinating.
But it sounds like, it sounds like to use their intellectual property, it's a consulting engagement, not access to a video.
Correct.
Hmm. What are we paying dues to NCL? Do we pay dues?
I'm not sure that it necessarily costs a whole lot. I'm not even sure of the total cost, but they, they wanted to make sure that it was a facilitated and community conversation that went along with the film.
Okay.
And we do pay twelve thousand dollars in dues, I think.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just to, uh, segue onto that, the NLC person who represents Denver will be in the area in March or April. And I'm going to double check on it at our NLC conference, uh, next month, uh, early March. And I personally prefer that they present it because they're the experts. I would hate for any of us to get up there and try to say what their knowledge base is. So we'll see. It's going to happen. Who knows when?
I do it every Tuesday night. Mayor Protem?
I believe the, the, uh, other thing they want is they want just not to show a film, but they, they want it to be facilitated so they're facilitated, so there's some action. And also they want people to know what resources are available nationally and statewide. And, uh, I think it's well worth it.
All right. Uh, I really don't have anything to say. So, Carol?
I, I do actually have something to say tonight. So it sounded like you, you liked the approach that was utilized tonight with the ordinance and the council common, the way we went through with that. Now we want to get a sense as to what type of issues you have before you. So there's one that's not necessarily a big issue, but it is an issue that council talked about and it's really the rebate program. So you all have been through that process a couple of times. Is that item something that you would want us to bring back in the work session format? Or is that item something you would just like to see in first reading?
I'd like to see it on, I mean, I, we, anyone not like this, I think it should come back like tonight and allow us to, the grocery, the grocery rebate? Untaxed food that we threw on the calendar. So.
That may be an item where just timing wise, we have to bring it in a general business, but.
Remember the, so that particular issue?
Yep.
The, the one hundred percent is your bandwidth? Do you have, do you have room to, to put that issue right now?
No, we're finishing that up.
Okay.
And so you all have given us direction and we have drafted the ordinance to bring forward.
Throw in a study session.
Are you okay with a general, um, business item instead of a study, study session because of timing? But the same process, you'd like to have the same process?
Yep. Okay. All right. Eugene? All right. Eugene?
Mayor and council, at least on the development incentive ordinance, draft ordinance, I want to recognize the team that worked really hard on it. Aaron did, Dan did, Harold and I did, Joni did. We had a lot of input on that, and I'm happy it worked. And we'll be replicating that in the future.
All right. Well done. Thank you, legal department. All right. And with that, we're adjourned.